Order at 7:03 if we all can stand for the pledge.
The United States of America. One nation, under God.
Rory, did we receive any public comment?
We did not.
Is there anybody on here for public comment? Hearing and seeing no public comments, I'll go with the first select woman's report. Okay. As you all know, we are working on our budget at this point in time. And we're quite happy to say that the insurance came in lower than what we expected. It came in at nine, at nine percent. And we're expecting it to increase around 11 or 13. That is great news that it's down to nine percent. However, we will be seeing an increase, as I stated before, in the police department budget due to the police accountability bill. As well as the trash and recycling contract is up and we'll be going out to bid. If anything, COVID has shown us that it's not just affecting the people as it's hit our trash budget pretty hard. We just were sent numbers. And I, I just wanted, if I, I just wanted to share these numbers with everybody. From July 20 to present, we have shipped to Comanta, which is our waste shipment where they do the trash, 4,657,000 tons of trash. From July of 2019 to January 20, we shipped 4,285 tons. This is an increase of about 374 tons or a nine percent increase. On the, that's just residential. On the commercial waste, we shipped 85.6 tons. We're in July of 2019 to January 20, we shipped 95.84, which is a decrease of 11%. So we can see that it's not just affecting us, you know, financially or mentally. It's affecting us, it's affecting us in our trash as well as while residents are producing more trash because we're home and we're cooking more. It's also affecting the commercials because there's not as many patrons working, giving more trash. So I just wanted to show, share those numbers with everybody. Our fire department, fire marshal, emergency management team will be presenting their budget tomorrow night. I have some more good news. The community center is planning on opening around the beginning of March. We're actually going to start opening town buildings slowly while taking the precautionary measures to make sure everybody's safe distancing, as long as our numbers still continue to tread down. Mary is starting to plan activities in the buildings while pray, like I said, practicing safe distances and everybody wearing their proper PPE. We did hear from Shay from the Boys and Girls Club that the club will not be coming back to Seymour at the present community center. They are unsure where exactly they will go right now. They do have Shelton. While this is sad to hear and the burden placed on the parents and the caretakers of the children in the town, the director of community center is looking to see what we can do to lessen the burden on the residents. We're actually looking into some options to see if we can have childcare there after school. The Nagatuck Valley Health Department will continue to use the gym for distributions of vaccination until it's no longer needed. I met with the PD, the police department, the fire department, as well as the contractors as we are actively collecting on the outstanding special. I forgot what, I forgot what I was going to call it. The additional police time. The, we have collected a lot of money. We've collected quite a few, made a big dent in that budget. We now have an SOP put into place for putting the invoices out, statements out, letters out, and collections on what is going to be done. And everybody's been trained on that. I met with Eversource, the Arborist with Tony, Rory, and our state rep to review their plan on tree trimming, the trees back. The plan is available for residents to see they're actively going to continue to cut the trees back from the lines and hoping that this will stop any more power outages. Can't guarantee that though. Excuse me. I attended a four hour Zoom presentation in regards to the regionalization of the wastewater treatment facilities. Seymour, Antonia, Derby, and Nagatuck. After the four hour Zoom presentation, it was deemed that it would not be beneficial to Seymour to either go with it to another town or to have anybody come to us. We, we have to upgrade our plant. So Seymour is not going to regionalize. Seymour is going to stay Seymour. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to that plant and it needs to be addressed soon. I met with Mike Horrible. He's a, the town of Seymour is representative on the regional water authority board. Mike brought up to, brought me up to date as to what's going on. He also brought a pamphlet as to what the regional water authority offers to the Connecticut residents. They have hiking trails that you can go on. There's a butterfly and bird watches you can go on. So the pamphlet is going to be posted onto the Seymour Facebook page as well as to our town. So that is my selectmen report. Is there any questions on that? Next on the item is number six is to take discussion.
We didn't approve the minutes from last.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry. Have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 2nd, 2020 regular meeting. Al second by Chris Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Monica. Discussion and take possible action regarding proposed 2021 roadwork. I don't see Brian. Did everybody have a chance to look at the list? Any thoughts? Oh, Brian is on here. Sorry, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
Brian, you, there's a lot of feedback.
Something's wrong with Brian's audio.
Nope. Atticky. And private duty was the word I was looking for.
Also called special duty in some towns.
Special duty, private duty, just duty. No, very staticky.
Unfortunately, no.
Well, Brian is trying to figure out his sound. Did, I know he can hear us. So is there any questions or thoughts on the roads? Al, Chris, I know you had some concerns.
On the codes itself or, or did you say code or roads?
The roads.
Okay, I didn't hear. I mean, I made my points on what I thought the priorities should be pretty abundantly clear a couple of weeks ago. There are a couple of specific roads that desperately need attention, especially Seymour Avenue over by the housing authority. I figured we'd be talking a little bit more about the sidewalks today as to what exactly the plans are there. And I see Brian with his phone. He'll probably call in and give some information about that. That's really what I want to talk about because I know we've got separate priority lists. And I wanted to know what everybody thought on how we are budget wise in terms of supporting some of those.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add to that, Chris, is the, where they are doing roadwork. If there is any, I'm sure from an engineering standpoint, is there any advantage due to same sidewalks at the same time? So where it's, where there is opportunities to kind of do it in sections, if there's any opportunities there. I think that was the only other thing that came to mind.
Go ahead, Al.
I just wanted to, I think the last time we pointed out how Seymour Ave and Buckingham were pretty beat up. I think Chris was talking about that too. There are definitely roads that need some attention, but like Brian told us last meeting with the, with the list, he's identified the roads that need a lot of attention. And, you know, I'd leave it to him to, to go in priority. They're all going to get done this year, but, um, you know, hopefully Brian can get his broadcast from Hawkins, Indiana in, in shape here. This is like an episode of Stranger Things, but we're hanging in there. I can only, I can only fill so much, Brian. My shtick is only about a five minute long show.
Supposedly I'm in. Can you guys hear me?
Much better.
I'm sorry, I, I had to call in, but, um, okay. What question can I answer? I'm sorry.
So Chris Bowen and Bob had questions on sidewalks.
So you want me to bring up the spreadsheet that I sent over to you guys?
Sure.
Yeah, my, and mine's not even a question in as much as, you know, where there's correlation to where we're doing roadwork. If there are sidewalks that are close to that, I know you'll make the right recommendation to do those at similar times. So they're done at, ideally, if you're going to close down a road, you can get them all done at one time, even if it's close by or nearby a road that you're working on. I'm assuming there might be some cases there. There may not be, Brian, I'm just, just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I mean, there's only a couple of these roads. First of all, can you guys see the sidewalk inventory?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so, um, there's only a handful, the one or two of these that are on the road list. And, uh, and of course we would, we would end up doing them. Or we could end up doing them while we're doing it, uh, doing the other work. So Shelton Street here is one of them that we have on the list. And there was one other.
But e- even if it's in a, in a close area to Brian, that's where I was considering. Even if it's, so you shut down that road once or, you know, so it's not impactful, even if it's close by. I don't know.
Oh, somewhere, something nearby?
Yeah.
I, we can, I, just keep it, it, it all depends on how much money we want to spend on this stuff. I mean, sidewalk work is not cheap. It's very, and the smaller the area that we're doing it, the more per square foot we're spending on it. So, and, and clearly there's, there's a pretty big list here that we could be spending millions and millions of dollars on. I, I prioritize them based on my own opinion, honestly. And I was, if, if I heard some feedback from you or the town, I was going to reassess it. But there's so much work that could be done that it, it really, uh, we, we, we got a long hill ahead of us.
Yeah, that's what I noticed. It would be very difficult to prioritize because the ones that need work all need work. It's not, you know?
Yeah. Well, I guess, right. So my question really is kind of for the board. I mean, where we see the priority lists here. You know, it's kind of hard to check them out in the middle of winter when everything's kind of iced over. But, um, I wanted to know what everybody thought on where we should, you know, do we even have the money to hit the A-list? With COVID expenditures, et cetera. We obviously need to do some repairs and some of these roads are a little bit more walked than others. I just want to gauge the temperature where we're at in terms of what can we do this year?
Well, and Marie can speak to low SIC funds that we have. And also it's built into the budget every year to.
Do a certain amount.
Yeah, we, we build it into the budget so that we've got money set aside.
My screen. Can you guys see me?
Yeah.
I can see you.
Okay, I lost my screen there for a minute. I don't know why.
Well, I, I think that's where I was going with if we were going to do the sidewalks, try and pick the ones that were close by roads that we were doing. So you just get those out of the way instead of making, and, and because if we, to, to assess which ones you would pick here, it would be very difficult just to make that assessment.
Well, I could, I could certainly pin, I can narrow down the list and see which ones are close and try to figure out if there's some smaller areas to just get done while we're there. Obviously, there's a big difference if it's a state road or if it's a town road.
Understood.
But we can look at it. I just, I would, I would look for some sort of budgetary number that you'd want me to spend, uh, spend here. Because whatever money we're spending on sidewalks, we're obviously not spending on the roads and they all need it. So, um, if, if there is something that this board would like me to focus on or a number or, you can leave it up to me, but I, if there is some kind of direction you want to give me, I'm, I'm open and happy to take it.
I mean, you know, with the amount of roads that we have to do, we may want to come up with some, make it so, some algorithm that's basically this many roads and this many sidewalks will be done on a yearly basis. And it doesn't have to hold true to it, but at least we have something we can go by.
To Bob, I just want to ask Brian, though, is it necessarily the roads that we're doing? Are the sidewalks equally as bad as the ones that you identified though? Cause they might not match, they just might not match up.
Yeah, I understood.
Yeah.
There's just, there's bad sections all over town. And then there's a handful of heavily used sections that have a lot of smaller bad sections. So Pearl Street's one of them. Washington's one of them. Shelton, um, is mostly bad, but it's only used by the, that specific neighborhood. River Streets, um, a pretty bad one. I mean, Maple Street, I could keep going. It's just, I, I think if we, if we start targeting a budget every year, and, and I did start the, the discussion with Deidre about how much money can we start spending out of low SIC funds? And maybe we can start targeting it, like the, this inventory is the first step, at least to identifying where we should be focusing. But I, I, I know I'm not answering the question perfectly, but, uh, there's just so much work that could be done. It's kind of hard to, to pinpoint right now.
So basically what you're saying is we need to prioritize whether the roads are more important or the sidewalks. Is that the gist?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far. I think they're all important. I, I think we just, we only have, we have three and a half million dollars to, to spend out of the bond money unless some other money somehow magically appears. And we just need to decide how much do you want to spend on sidewalks? And we can try it out for a year and tell me this much. And then we'll still have some money next year because I'm not planning on spending it all. I think we just need to have some sort of direction or percentage or an amount that you want me to try to focus on and just go from there. Because again, we have three and a half million dollars, but we could spend $15 million on the road. We all know this, so.
Is the sidewalk budget separate, that's separate from the road budget though, correct?
I don't have a, I don't have a sidewalk budget.
That's why it's separate.
Okay.
There isn't.
So maybe Rory, when you have your next strategic planning meeting, I don't think, to my knowledge and recollection, we didn't have something like that recommended to build into the budget, but that might be something we, you, you want to consider.
I mean, shouldn't we, and we, we could look at if we know, if we know we have a budget of three and a half, maybe we say we know we're going to put 10% against sidewalks every year and just get to, and I'm using numbers. It can be whatever percentage we want, but we, we should target it. So it's a, because one thing I don't want to do is I don't want to year on year and just go aggressively attack the roads and then just have great roads and terrible sidewalks, right? So if we just get to some percentage that we can all agree upon, maybe that number's 10%. I don't know how much 10% gets us, but we should consider a percentage of sidewalks, what it costs to do a percentage of sidewalks and then come up with a ratio that makes sense. And that's why, that's where I was headed with the, and, you know, if we're doing a road already and we're closing off a section, we're going to pay for the police offers and all those other things, the, all the amenities that go with that. If we can make sure that we're capitalizing on if there's sidewalks close by, get those done because we know we got to do them, let's do it that way. So we're more efficient in how we do the roads and the sidewalks. I think the other thing we have to gain is efficiency, you know? And so we're capitalizing on when we're spending on police and shutting down roads and all those other things that we know we have to spend on. If we do it a different way, we'll be going back to the same road, shutting down that road just to do a sidewalk or, you know, have to play, pay for police prices or whatever we're going to have to do. That, I think that that's what we need to capitalize on. We're a small enough town, we should be able to do that.
It's a great idea. Any other questions on Rose or for Brian?
Well, just so I understand, i- is the 10% number something you want me to use as a guide? So we're just going to spend a hundred to $200,000 next year to, on, on sidewalks? I mean, I think that's a great idea. But it, it, it's kind of up to this board whether.
Sidewalks, and again, I don't have the numbers of what it costs to do each one of those sidewalks. But the, would that be, and that kind of, Brian, does that knock down a five sidewalk? I mean, what type of, what do we get for a hundred thousand? What do you think? I know that.
It's hard.
They're all going to vary, right? So.
It's really hard. I mean, the Washington, Washington Street is probably $200,000 alone. Pearl Street, I could easily spend a hundred thousand dollars on.
Okay.
River Streets, 300,000. So it's, but then I can go target some areas. We can go down to the gap. I don't know if anybody looked at this, but these are, these are areas in town that basically the sidewalk goes and then just stops for a little ways and then it picks up again. So it's just a gap in between two sections of sidewalk. And the main reason we have priority ratings here is just because people complain about them. So we could, we could spend it on that as well. It's, it's hard. I, I could certainly be as efficient as we possibly can. If I see an area in, where we're doing other work, I can definitely target that area so we can try to be as efficient as possible. I mean, I, I try to do that in everything we do.
I think it's important, but I also think if, I, 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 I think bad sidewalks where people can get hurt or trip or do all those other things that if we want to get red, you know, we want to correct, they're way more important than a gap. You know?
That's a good direction.
Which in some cases they are that bad, right? We know that.
Chris, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to point out that, um, we do have a cost analysis for the roads. I mean, there are, obviously those numbers aren't sacrosanct, but we at least have dollars and cents applied to them where we don't have them applied to the sidewalks. Getting that cost analysis, I'm assuming would take some time, right? I mean, we can ballpark a figure, but.
Well, it depends on how detailed you want me to get it. I, I can, I can, I can get a cost analysis based on some general conditions and then just apply a square foot unit cost and that'll get us in the ballpark. And that might be a good, appropriate way to start this. If you wanted a much more detailed analysis, then yeah, obviously that takes more time.
I think the swag, the swag is fine, I think, on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I also think that since we have money in the budget for the roads as it is, we can possibly work on the cost analysis for what sidewalk's going to cost the most and more. And I think more importantly, to prioritize the ones that are more traveled, like Maple Street, Pearl Street, et cetera. Those are very frequently walked. So I think there's some prioritization that can be done there. We can worry about getting the logistics of the sidewalks done while we're, while the construction company is paving some of the more troublesome roads. Is that a fair analysis?
Yeah.
I'm spitballing here, so if I'm talking out my derriere, stop me.
Well, so it sounds like it makes sense to me.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
So we still have to take action regarding the proposed 2021 roadwork. We have to, uh, I have, I need a motion to move that forward.
We're motioning to move forward the proposal based on the spreadsheet that we had on this spreadsheet here.
Yes.
So moved.
Yeah.
Motion second by Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes by motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Brian. You want to stay on because the next one we're going to be talking about is the Route 67 Spot Improvement Project Alternatives.
All right, so, um, I'll take it through what this all is. And, and I, I assume most of you have, have seen some of this. This isn't my project, but I've been involved in it somewhat since they started it. So this is a federally funded project where the federal government pays 80% and the state pays 20%. I do have a quick, let me pull up something, hold on. I thought I did. There you go.
This is a thing in our packet that we talked about.
Project 124 dash 165, Chris.
Okay, yep.
All right, can we, can we all see this? The Bank Street Project Corridor. You guys see this? So this is, this is the project that's being designed by Mylona McBroom. It's a pretty extensive project. It starts with some intersection improvements over here at Franklin Street. Here's Stop and Shop. And it ends up at Clarence Village over here. They're going to add some lanes. They're gonna, they're gonna add some turning lanes. They're going to widen the road. They're going to continue parking down here. It's, it's a pretty extensive project. It's approximately $7 million estimated, of which the state's going to pay a million and the feds pay 6 million. So during the whole process, we've been giving feedback through the COG, uh, to Mylona McBroom, and we thought that we could use the downtown standards for this, which would be for the sidewalks and the lighting and everything. So that was, um, we provided sidewalks of the, the pavers, the granite curbs, and the decorative lighting all along here because they are going to rehab all of the sidewalks along this area. Well, after, I guess I'm haggling with the state, they decided that, that those improvements, the pavers, the granite curbs, and the decorative lighting are upgrades from what the town standard is. So what they have proposed to do, I have to pull up another screen, hold on.
Right, and that's just their assessment of what the town standard is? Is that?
I guess it's their assessment, yes. But it's going to be, we, we tried to push back. The COG tried very hard to push back and, um, I, I, I don't know if we're going to be able to argue this out, but.
Okay.
Can everybody see this Word document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they've identified two areas, is the downtown orbit and then outside of the downtown orbit. And essentially a downtown orbit is the area to the east of the Walgreens driveway, thereabouts. So I'll just take you through all this. But essentially what it is, is the state and the feds are going to pay certain amounts of the upgrades. And if we want to continue with these upgrades, then the town's going to have to pay for them. So right here, we're inside of the orbit limit. We're talking about the granite stone curbing. The state is not going to pay any of the upgrades. So we would have to pay $3,900 approximately. These are estimates, obviously. They get adjusted when it actually goes out to bid. And I failed to mention, the plan is to, for this to go out to bid this summer and hopefully construction start by the end of, uh, by fall. We all know it's a government project, so those are, those are loose dates. So granite stone curving, it would cost the town $3,900 to have granite stone curbing instead of concrete curbing inside the downtown orbit. This is also just the, the curb portions of the curbing. So that's another 4,300, $4,700 that the, the town would have to kick in. I'm going to go through this quickly and then I'll just say something at the end. Brick paver sidewalk. So this would be something like in front of the Strand, which is a very high, heavy duty, long lasting brick paver sidewalk with a concrete pad underneath. The state's doing nothing. But the feds pay for 80%, don't forget. But so the town. But so if the town wanted a brick paver sidewalk on this whole area, it would be another $48,000. And then the decorative lighting, which would be like the downtown gas lighting looking fixtures, it would be an extra $60,000. So inside the downtown orbit limit is 117,534 estimate. Up outside, granite stone, $17,000 for the town. The cur, the, there is no curved curbing and there's also no decorative lighting, so that, that wouldn't apply. And then $81,000 for the brick paver sidewalks. For a grand total of $216,000 if you wanted to do these upgrades. Now, you don't have to do all of these upgrades. You don't have to do any of these upgrades, obviously. My opinion is, if you're gonna consider an upgrade, consider the granite curbing. Because the granite curbing will last 50 to 100 years. The concrete curbing lasts less than 15. And that's from pure experience. We've replaced a bunch over the last five years and the plows just rip them up. So to, to just end this on my recommendation, I would suggest spending the $17,000 for the curbing here and the 3,900, actually, the, about $9,000 here. For a total of about $28,000, $30,000 and get granite curbing, it's a long-term benefit. I don't know whether the town has the money. I leave that to you, but that would be my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any question.
Bob Finley?
Brian, are, are they doing that bridge over? Is that going to be redone?
So I'll go back.
Crosses Allen's, you know where?
I believe they're doing some modifications, but they're not completely replacing it. I think they're changing some of the guide rail, doing some aesthetic improvements.
More where I was headed.
Yeah, both bridges will be somewhat changed. I think there was some haggling going on between the CAG and them, but there will be some improvements. It was, it was the extent of the improvement that they were haggling over. But I do believe that's part of the project, yeah.
In your opinion, any opinion about the bricks versus regular?
Um, it looks great, but I, I don't know if it's worth, I don't think it's worth an extra 50,000. That would be basically in front of the old seamer lumber and up to Allen's Plumbing. I, I don't see, in, in these times when we're trying to stretch every penny that we can, I don't know if it's really warranted for an area that probably isn't gonna see a huge streetscape at any, in my opinion. So I, I think a concrete sidewalk would be fine and, and the, the engineer threw out that there's, there's options for different concrete scoring to make it a little more appealing. So there is some options with the concrete that we can do to make it look a little different and a little better, but 50,000 there and another I think 81,000, I, I just, I don't see how we're gonna benefit from it.
Understood.
So when I was on the, the meeting, I basically had said, you know, and, and Brian Rory on that meeting as well, I basically said, no, I, I'd rather go with the grant, the granite curbing because I know that's gonna last longer. And that's really what we need down there. I didn't want to go with the lighting because there's no need for it to look like, was it Division Street? In Ansonia, where it looks like a runway that Ansonia just did. I also didn't want to go with the, the sidewalks because we're gonna have to seal them every five years. And if somebody was to buy the piece of, you know, the old seamer lumber property, they may tear up that sidewalk, depending on whatever they have to do over there. So if somebody moves it over there, you know, have them put in the nice sidewalk. I wanted to just go with the, the granite curbing for, for money purposes. We really don't have the money to be, to be doing all those extras, but the granite curbing would, would save us down the road. But I wanted to bring it to the board to have the board have a say. Chris Bowen?
I just have one question. The federal slash state money, is this a use it or lose it situation?
We're using all of it.
As far as I know, yeah. I think it's earmarked. The money's there. So they're, they're just going through the formalities here. And again, this may come in less. It may come in more too, don't forget that. But typically, the, the estimates are higher than the actual bidded amount, so. But as far as I know, this project is off and running and, and it will be out to bid as soon as they get through all the minutia that they have to get through.
Any question?
Any other question?
Everybody on my screen. I can't see if anybody's raising their hand.
One question. Once they put in the, I mean, I like, I actually liked the idea of the decorative lighting, cause I think you make, I, I think it aesthetically adds to the town, but I understand your concern, Emery. But what I don't, I also don't want it to start looking like, you know, I don't want it to look too industrial either, like a mini city, depending on how they do it. So I guess I'm just trying to envision what it would look like, what it's going to look like with just the granite curbing and the regular sidewalk and whatever lights the state or whatever they're picking to put in.
I, I don't know the quantities that they were planning. They, they did budget out the, the same type of gas lantern that, that we have in the downtown, but I don't know exactly to how many and how they're spaced. So I'd have to get to that information. I'm not totally sure.
I think it's just something to consider because we want to. We've talked before about making sure that our town stays aesthetically pleasing and we do kind of, where we do have some say in how that's done. Let's, I'm not saying either way, cause I, just yet, I, I would just like to have an idea so that we make the right decision. That's it.
Well, I, I mean, it's worth talking about in the fact that the feds are paying 80% of it. You're just gonna have to come up with the 20%.
Right.
We, sorry, we. I can get more information if, if you'd like me to to, to get some more detailed plans for it.
But I'm only one person. Does everyone else? I mean, I, I guess it depends. Don't do all the work if everyone else is satisfied with whatever they think the state's gonna put in.
Bob Finley?
This is a little bit random, but it, it is only for that 67 area. Is there any ways that we can get to do the bridge railings across 313? Some of the best, best views we have in Seymour? Because that bridge, those railings make that bridge look terrible. And I, I re, I recognize that that project is for 67, but is there opportunity for us to do something on the 313 Bridge?
The, the one that goes over Little River?
Yeah.
Under Allen's Plumbing, right, Bob?
No, the, that, so that's part of that project. I'm thinking the one near the community center.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The community center.
Oh, yeah.
Because the railings on that bridge are disgusting and that's probably one of the best views we have in Seymour. When you cross that bridge and you stand there, there's, there's beautiful views there for the waterfall.
Yeah, you're talking about to the right of Houstonic Wire, the old Houstonic Wire. Behind seamer lumber, is that right?
In front of the community, old community center, well, the community center today, right?
That goes to what? The old, to Zoe's, the old Tressel Tavern, et cetera?
Yeah.
Correct. That's 313, right, you believe?
Yes.
Yeah, so when I'm thinking about what you guys are doing over there, and if you place the railings and the bridge there, that's gonna look great. If we can fix that other bridge, those are two main drags that are, I mean, again, some great views there, so. And that, that railing looks terrible. It's unsafe and I, I think it looks terrible. It's low.
The only thing I can offer with that is, is to bug whoever is in charge of that up at DOT. And sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the oil. I mean, is their bridge, the state bridge?
Right. Well, that's why I was, I, I know I kind of asked that randomly, Brian, but since we're doing that area over there, I'm just, was wondering if there's opportunity for that other side as well.
Well, no, there's that, pretty much all of our bridges seem to, to need that kind of attention. I know the ones on 67 are just as bad. So the only thing I can, I, I can try and just squeak a little bit to the DOT and see if we can bump it up on the list. But it may take two, three, four years. Depends. It seems like sometimes that works. I know I complained, one of the first things I did when I came in was I complained about all the the concrete falling off of the piers of Route 8, Route 8.
Yeah.
And I called a few times and then all of a sudden they showed up and started doing it. So I don't know whether I had something to do with that, but I was complaining about it and maybe, maybe it does help. So I'll, I can do that for the bridges as well and see what happens.
If you can, that would be great.
I gotta find the right person first, so I'll do my best.
Thank you, thanks, Brian.
So we have to take possible action or we can table it. Do I have a motion to either take action on the Route 67 spot improvement project or to table it and wait for Brian to come back with us with more data?
It, it sounds like from what people are asking with the number of questions, it sounds like it might be best for Brian to come back with a little more data. So we have the confidence to, to vote on it. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it as is, but I'm just taking a temperature.
Well, to be fair, I asked something completely outside the 67. So from a plan on the 67, what's, I think the recommendations of the, the concrete, the granite and, and the sidewalk is fine?
Waiting another two weeks affect our timelines?
I, I really doubt it. I don't think it's gonna make much of a difference and they're still working on the final plans. It's just whether or not they, they include these items or not. So do you think at a minimum, this board would go forward with the granite curb?
I would be on board with that. We, honestly, I would vote for that today. It's the other improvements with the 8% kick in that I would want to get some feedback on.
I think I can at least go back to them and say, listen, I'm pretty sure they're going with the granite curb, so they can move in that direction. That won't hold them up there. And then I'll get some more information about the lighting. And and, and I, I don't think it's gonna hold anything up. I really don't. Not, you mean, what, another two weeks, maybe three? I don't think, I don't think it's gonna make a difference.
I, and I, I, I'm definitely on board with the granite curbing. Yeah. I guess the only other concern that I have is I would caution, maybe this isn't the year to consider aesthetics, considering how spending is with the pandemic and how much people are hurting right now. That's, that 20% is a nice number, but it's still a heavy ask with our budget. So I think we should probably spend a couple of weeks thinking about that, getting more information. While the granite curbing is obviously gonna save us more money. I think a year being in a pandemic has put to rest all what we thought about aesthetics.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you on one hand, Chris, but on the other hand, it sits with us for a very long time. So that's why I personally would like some time too.
Oh, I concur with you on that one. Definitely. I definitely concur with you on that one. I'm not even disagreeing. I just wanted to put that as a slight caution at to, you know, we're obviously a very budget conscious board, so. Just spitballing.
Bob Finley?
Yeah, Brian, does that give us any benefit? Were any of the sidewalks that, that are on the sheet, those sidewalks that are gonna be done over, do we get any benefit out of that, just out of curiosity?
I did, I didn't include those in my, in my inventory. Cause I knew they were gonna, I mean, I think they're, I think they're listed in the inventory, but I, I certainly didn't include them in any of the work or priority listings, because I knew they would be taken out.
I figured you would. Okay, thank you.
So I need a motion to have Brian go forward with the, the, and let them know that go ahead with the curb, the granite curbing and to also come back to the board in two weeks or three weeks, come back to us with to get our answer on the lighting and pricing and. A move by Trish, second by Bob Finley. All in favor? Thank you so much, Brian.
My pleasure. Thank you. I'll be back and get you some more information.
I know, we're seeing more of you than anything.
Thank you.
Okay, motion eight, discussion and take possible action regarding, regarding the hiring of head children's services for the library. So back in the summer, the, the head children's librarian left, left the town. Ann Saisley is her name. Because of COVID and the library being closed, we did not feel it. We did not fill the position. We kind of left it as we put the assistant librarian, children's library in that position. And we're going to promote her. We had, what, we posted it. We had one person apply. It was the assistant. So now here it is, the library is gonna start to get back open. What this person does is she's in charge of all the children activities. So we just need to promote her officially to this position.
What's, would we be rehiring an assistant to replace? So she would just get moved up and into a higher figure?
Yeah, we would leave the assistant children's librarian vacant until probably summertime, depending on COVID and what our numbers look like. Can I have a motion? Motion by Trish, second by Bob Finley. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Number nine is discussion and take possible action regarding the Homeland Security Grant Program MOA. We do this every year. It's a regional grant program. What it is, is region, everybody in this region, they, they buy and they share regional equipment, regional two, operates this for us. We just vote on this every year. And I just need a motion to go forward with it. Motion by Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen. Discussion?
Madam, first select woman, I would just like to note that there is a prepared resolution in the agenda packet that is on a form that I believe was prepared by the folks in connection with the grant. So that, the, the resolution that's in there should be moved in connection with this particular grant.
Do I have to read the motion?
No, it's, it's in the agenda packet in writing and I believe that is sufficient.
Thank you. Alan, Kevin motion, discuss, we had a motion. It was motioned by Bruno? Bob? Thank you. Everybody moved. It was mo, motion by Bob, second by.
I thought Chris did.
Discussion, all in favor? Motion moves. Chair votes aye, motion was for. Thank you. Okay. This, I, item number 10, discussion and take possible action regarding Emory Winslow Scale Company tax abatement, Roy Burke. You're on mute.
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. Last meeting, you guys voted on a tax abatement application for Grand Light. That application and this application were actually both started when Sadie Colcord was our Economic Development Director. Projects were delayed because of COVID, uh, and so I reached back out when the Grand Light, uh, abatement was being processed to check on their status, and the project was complete. And so, uh, they have, they had also already, uh, received kind of preapproval from this board. Um, and they sent me, uh, all at once, the full packet of backup information. And the, uh, the spreadsheet, uh, was included in your packets. And so I'm gonna share that real quick, just so we can see what we're talking about here. The only thing, uh, that they uh, so at the, at the top, the section that says non-capital intangibles are not eligible, and they're aware of that. Additionally, uh, the bottom section, uh, which is, uh, kind of equipment and process engineering is not eligible, and they're aware of that. All of the highlighted items are what they're applying for. The only exception, you can see number eight there is a forklift truck, which, uh, we've already had conversations, that also is not eligible. But so we're looking at, uh, let's see, about six hundred and forty thousand dollars in a tax abatement application. And so, as you're aware, the tax incentive program has several tiers. Just gonna pull it up now. The, uh, I believe that the tier that this one would fall within is five hundred thousand to a million.
That one's no less than fifty, no greater than seventy-five, is that the range on that? Or am I?
Yeah, so the investment range is five hundred to one point five million. And correct, it's fifty to seventy-five percent for a period of two years. It's a fixed period.
But it's the third bullet under letter E, correct?
Yeah, yes. Yep.
Um, you know, similar to what you guys did with Grand Light. I know you had expressed a desire for maybe some greater clarity going forward, but when you guys take a look at the policy. Uh, but given what's in there now, uh, they had some Connecticut, uh, I'm sorry, some local contractors. And they had, they actually moved all of their, they had a facility in, uh, Terre Haute, Indiana, uh, that they consolidated, and, uh, all of their operations are now based in Seymour, so they have a few more positions based here. Uh, these are factors, you know, that the plan lays out for consideration. They are at the low end uh, of the range in terms of five hundred thousand to one point five million. So, you know, those are the factors that you guys can consider when making it, and your discretion is to choose a, a percentage between fifty and seventy-five.
But Rory, you just said they centralized from a couple of different areas to Seymour. Is that what I kind of heard you say?
They, they had a facility in Indiana, and they, uh, got rid of it and consolidated all of their operations here.
Okay.
But so they brought more employment.
Right, right. Yes, that's where, that's where I was headed, yep. And do you remember what the percentage increase in employment was? Did, did you, I, I thought we, we had that maybe in the last time we talked about it. Did it bring X amount of people?
Um, you know, I don't have the numbers.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I thought it was like ten, I think if I remember, if I'm remembering right, but I could be wrong. So now, let's come back down to where we talked about. How do we assess between the fifty and the seventy-five? I think we have to take into consideration the centralization part, where they brought businesses to, you know, they brought, they centralized in Seymour. That's important.
Rory, do they still have more room to grow in that building? Do we know?
Uh, I don't know offhand. You know, by, based on, um, some of the ineligible items from their application. It seems like they brought more equipment in, so, you know, they, they certainly did have room to expand, but I don't know if they've kind of maxed out at this point. And also, you know, I'm sure you guys reviewed the policy, but, um, you know, if they should outgrow the facility in the period of the abatement, the abatement is forfeit, and they're required to pay back any, uh, you know, the difference.
I mean, I'll throw out a recommendation of sixty with the intention that they're on the lower end of that range, but they also centralized in Seymour, so should get a little bit of a benefit.
Sixty was what I was thinking as well.
I think that's a fair, if that's, if we're gonna range it like that, I think that that's the fair approach.
I agree.
Okay. So I have sixty on the table. Is that a fair number? Is everybody in agreeance with that?
Yeah.
Yes, can we just make it clear what factors we're basing that on, though, Emory? Just make sure, I know we've mentioned a couple, but let's make sure we have that clear on the record.
Absolutely. So, we're looking at sixty percent based on the fact that they consolidated other facilities to their Seymour, Connecticut facilities, which brought in more employees, so brought in more revenue, because tax base, you know, the employees are coming in, housing, food. Right?
Agreed.
Increased their employee, more jobs.
So essentially, they made a long-term commitment to Seymour, and moved from Indiana, all their, all their pieces of their company here, and consolidated it into our town.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree.
I have a motion for sixty, then?
I, I'm sorry, just real quick, I, I was able to find in my email, it says that they, um, are bringing nine full-time employees addition.
Yeah, okay, I was, I wasn't too far off, yep.
So a motion by Bob Finley for sixty percent, second by Trish Danko, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion? Motion passes. Sixty percent, alright, so. Are we good with that? Item number eleven is discussion and take possible action regarding the tax abatement policy. So at our last meeting, it was mentioned by the board that they wanted to see the policy, because we have some new members on the board, some of us were on the board when this was put into place, some of us were not. It's a town of Seymour Tax Incentive Po- Policy. It was effective March seventh, two thousand and twelve. Everybody was given a, uh, the copy of the policy, and in the policy, it says that this must be reviewed every five years. It's been ten years since anybody looked at this policy. So I would like to put a, uh, subcommittee, and I'm sure Rich Portella is gonna tell me if I can do this, or if I can't do this, put a subcommittee together to look at this, to see and to make the changes, so to make it more clear, that's not even proper, to, to make it clearer, to make, put a chart in there as to what it should be. Give it a little bit more meat. What are your thoughts?
Answering, uh, your question first, uh, madam, first select woman, uh, you certainly may appoint a committee to review the tax incentive policy and make recommendations back to the board. That's appropriate.
Can I appoint a committee now?
Yes.
Sweet. As Bob Finley smiles, because he knows I'm gonna pick Trish and him, and, uh, I think, you know, I would love to have Rob Van Egan on it, but I know he has a new baby, but I also like to have Chris Bowen on it.
Amen.
You're in?
Emory, you know, I could, I, can I ask, do we have any, can we get some history of some past use case examples where this is applied? Like, we have one right now. But are there past years where this has been applied? Do we have any use cases we can go on?
I'm, Rory can get you that information, Rory.
So you wanna see, um, incentives, uh, that were approved by this board?
Yeah, over the last maybe, you know, few years, so we can see some, get some use cases, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. I can put that together.
Okay.
Great. So Rory, did you get who was appointed?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Trish, Bob Finley, Chris Bowen, Rob Van Egan.
Okay, absolutely.
Can I, can I make a suggestion on this document, though? Just to the, to the subcommittee? I'm, I'm an ISO person. I need to see revisions on the bottom. I think.
Yeah, no, it, it has to be, yeah, I, I would, you're right, there, there's some formatting issues we have to take into consideration, yep.
That's all. Trish? What are your thoughts? See?
I'm fine with that. I agree. I mean, you can't, you need to have a history anyhow going forward, so even once it's finalized, you wanna hold on to revisions made.
I like to, alright, great. Thanks, guys. Um, I like to have, entertain a motion to add to the agenda, the tax abatement for the fire department nap, ambulance. Motion, uh, motion by Trish.
Aye.
Second by Bruno, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to add to the agenda, a discussion on the economic director position. Motion by Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen. Discussion, all in favor? Great.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Um, so I know we have on our agenda about executive session, litigation, Seymour ceiling, there is no executive session. We are not ready to discuss this yet. Correct, Rich?
That, that's correct. Uh, we were hopeful, but it's a little premature.
Okay. So we're gonna remove item number twelve and number thirteen, and we're gonna add the tax abatement in your package. Rory, sent over to you guys, a tax abatement for citizens, Seymour Fire Department Citizens Company, number two, Great Hill Hose Company. In that list, I just need you to, you go through it, make sure there are no, um, conflicts. Once the Board of Selectmen approves this list, this list has gone by, the captain submitted it to the, uh, fire commissioners. The fire, the vice chair, the co-chair, Pete San Perry, submitted it to us. Once we approve it, we will then send it over to Dana Flack, the tax collector. She will then go through it to ensure there are, everybody on there is eligible, there are no back taxes. If back taxes are due, then those names will not be eligible to receive the abatement until their taxes are paid in full. And she has a time period on it, so she sends them a letter, you're supposed to receive a tax abatement. However, you did not receive, you did not pay your taxes, pay your taxes to date, and then you'll get your abatement. If no taxes are paid, then you get no abatement. We also have one for Seymour Ambulances, and you can go through that, and we can just push those all three together. For any issues, concerns, have a motion to push it forward? By Trish, second by Alberta? Discussion? Share votes, all, motion carries, alright. Next on our list is the, uh, economic director. So as I've been discussing, I'm in the middle of budget time, and I've budgeted for forty-five thousand for this economic director. Forty-five thousand would get us a part-time position, and I just need to know if we look at putting it together within this budget season, or if I'm going to take it out of my budget and just use it as a placeholder. Because we really need to do something. I understand, I understand the board's concerns, we're in the middle of COVID, we don't really wanna be spending the money, but I need to do a budget as most accurately as possible. Chris Bowen?
My stance on this is that the thirty-five thousand dollars that we had for an Economic Development Director was put into the discretionary budget in COVID, when COVID started. We don't need to spend that on a part-time position for something that we've been arguing is full-time. I don't see the need to have that money allocated to a part-time position that we don't think is sufficient at a time when we could use that forty-five thousand dollars elsewhere.
Thank you, Chris. Trish? Did you have your hands up?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion on it?
Emory, this is just to ensure, just to, whether it's a budgetary item or not, that's it.
Budgetary item.
I don't see the need.
I mean, it's, it's budgeted at forty-five thousand, and it's, we have it as part-time. Do we really think a part-time? When the time comes, do we really think part-time is the way we wanna go?
No. No, it's not even worth it at that. For what, I think, and speaking personally, for what I would like the position to entail, and what I think it is, the potential is, we're wasting our time with part-time. And considering we're not gonna fill a full-time position until after COVID as well on the back burner, um, we already agreed to that. Because of that, there's no point in even entertaining forty-five thousand for a part-time position.
Here's the only, maybe I'm thinking of it wrong, but if we keep it as a budgetary line item, I'm thinking about it strictly from a budget perspective. We can make another assessment to make it a full-time job and find money somewhere else and have some of the monies already assigned. So, I, I know why you're, I know why we're saying that, but once you take it out of the budget, you're gonna just, it's just gonna be a spend. And you will not be ready for when you, when you want to, because you could find extra budget if you need to, that I think.
I'll respond to that after Rob makes his point.
Yeah, I see Rob's hands up, yep.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I was gonna echo what Bob was gonna say, is I'd much rather keep it in there where we could, uh, do something with it later. Once it's gone, soon as we try to bring it in, you're gonna get people saying, why are you trying to spend more money when it's something that we already had? So, I mean, hell, if anything, I'd say realign it more towards what we look for a full-time budget, uh, we could always ratchet it down. Uh, but, yeah, I, I don't like the idea of taking it out, because that'll just, the optics of that later, they're just gonna cause problems.
I agree, but you think forty-five thousand is going to be enough for a full-time economic director?
No, you're gonna find extra budget when you make it full-time. That's the key.
Alright.
Yeah, see, I, I respectfully disagree, uh, with my colleagues, because either way, we're gonna have to add money to the budget to um, bring in an appropriate person for this job and pay them what they're Bring in an appropriate person for this job and pay them what they're worth. I am willing personally to strike that forty five thousand dollars for the next year as part of our emergency budget, if you want to call it that, for lack of a better term. That forty five thousand dollars is useful elsewhere, we're not going to be hiring an economic development director in the next year, I don't think. We've been batting around the idea, most of us on EDC for three years now. I think for the next year, I mean, we can consider adding it later when we're better. Uh, when our, when the town's finances are a little bit more stable. I would be comfortable striking that money, just because either way, we're going to have to add. A line, we're going to have to add money for a full-time position anyway, whether we have to add a line to the budget or not, to me is irrelevant.
But Chris, it's just the difference of adding another forty thousand versus having to lump up an 8K, it, the justification becomes different. What you can do right now from a budget perspective, you can say, I have it slated for a part-time, it's still there. And then when we decide, when we sit, we could, we're all in agreement that we need a full-time person. And that could come in the summertime, we can just say, we're going to make that a full-time position, add another whatever money, money we're going to, we're going to add to that to make it relevant. And, and move forward versus, I'm going to line item it out and then go ask the town for another eighty thousand, we kept this in there for that purpose, right? That's the only difference, and again, and I'm only speaking from a budget line, like when you look at it from a P and L standpoint, looking at it from that perspective. I don't, that, because once you take it out, I'm with Rob, it's gone.
But what you're, your argument is basically one on justification to anyone looking at the budget who hasn't seen these discussions.
Rob?
That's a fair point.
Van Egan?
Uh, and my only last comment to this, in regards to what Chris said about COVID and waiting till the end. I think that gets a little dangerous, because originally we thought this was going to be two, three months, and then maybe six months. And I mean, now they talk about an endemic and with new strains, I don't want to be three years down the road not having hired a director, because we thought this was going to blow over eventually. If it looks like it's going to go that way, that's all the more reason, if we get even a part-time person. Who can come see how the town can adjust to. Life with constant COVID, or a full-time position, I, I don't think, depending on how things go, we're not going to be able to afford to wait. Two to three years for COVID to be completely done, if it ever is. And we may just have to learn to live with that and get an expert who can help us adjust to that economically.
Okay, but remember the director is a way to help alleviate the, the tax burden on the residents, right? And bringing in business, go ahead, Finley.
Well, the other side to that too, and again, we may come into the summertime and. So the other concept could be, in the summertime, this could be a half-year position that we could use it for. And then rebudget for the next year, full year, so, you know, you can think of it that way, because we're already kind of into the year, you, and let's say we don't, we don't decide to hire till the summer. Well, that could cover that half year, and then we can look at the next year as a full budget. So, again, I, I'm just floating that out there, I just don't want to lose that money. You know? Because I do believe that we do have to make that decision, it, it is going to be important for us to have a director in that position. And, and it may come in the summertime, it may come in the fall. At this point, we don't know, but I think we have to start really considering it, I don't want to wait another year.
I, I don't, I, I don't either, but Bruno?
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we could take it out, it'll never go back in, people will never go for it, to our point, that's just the way it goes in, in a small community. But the other piece is, yeah, we don't know about COVID, we don't know the future, we don't know when it's going to be defeated, so. I wouldn't bank all of our decisions on that, because life is going to have to go on, and we're going to need to still try to develop our economic base in town. Granted, if the economy is laid to waste over this thing, which has already taken a pounding. I, I don't know what to say, we would need that extra advice, preferably from a full-time professional. To guide us through that process, I would feel comfortable with that, so I'm not looking gloom and doom to the future, I'm looking at, what are the positives, what can we do? What can we have in place to continue to succeed and move the town forward, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I would just, as you were saying that, Al, another thing came to my head, it, it was a very important thing you said. COVID is going to definitely change the dynamics of whether businesses are going to start in certain areas, in fact. The days of industrial park businesses might not even be there anymore. So the, the days of having an office space, it, it's changing dynamically, I, I look at what's going on in my own place, right? So, when you look at it that way, even a part, maybe a part-time EDC would work. Because they're really just going to be looking from a small commercial aspect to bring things to town, I mean, who knows, the, the dynamic is going to change dramatically. Thinking big and thinking, oh, how do we fill the industrial space? That goes, that might go away.
It's already changing, right, it was changing before the pandemic with the Amazon, Amazon's totally changed the game with brick, brick and mortar buildings. Everybody's going, everybody's closing down, People's Bank is talking about closing a bunch of banks down, they're all going online. Everybody wants to go online, everybody wants cryptocurrency, everybody wants to make it simple and easy for people to click and buy and have it delivered to their home, I mean. This is where we are, this is where the future is going, I can work from home, I can talk to Rich, I could talk to my colleagues from home, I could work. At this desk I'm sitting at, just like I'm in my office, that is the future. People are not going to be renting that huge commercial space anymore, I've talked to landlords in Fairfield County, in New Haven County, there are clients of ours. That's what I talk to them about, they're like, Al, the small retail, retail space, not the big. The small office space for the dentists, the doctors, the lawyers, the accountants, whoever wants to open up their, their little, just to have a place to meet somebody, hopefully, if things come back to normal, a lot of them are putting that off. So, I mean, I don't want to get in a soapbox, I'm not Mr. Forbes Magazine here, but this is just what I'm hearing from friends of mine in the industry, clients, colleagues. Watching the news, listening to friends of mine, used to work at Fortune 500 companies, you hit it on the head, Bob. We don't know, but we have an idea, right, we're starting to see these things come about, and businesses are going to have to stay nimble, stay flexible, or they're going to die.
Correct.
I, I just want to thank the board for a very fruitful discussion, and you all bring up some great points, and I will back off on my point. Thank you.
I mean, that's what we do, we all, we all talk, you know? I, I think that's what makes this board so great, is that we're able to respect each other's decisions and opinions.
I agree.
Trish, you have anything to say?
Thank you.
Okay, I will keep it in there, I, before, I want to get you guys' opinions on all that. Okay. Next on the agenda is item number fourteen, which is appointments. I'm going to pull it up on my phone, okay? So the appointments are. Rob Van Egan to the WPCA, three-year term expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one. Need a motion?
A move.
A move by Al Bruno, second by Trish, all in favor?
Aye. Staying.
Emery? Real quick, this, you guys will see the, the appointments are listed as three years, but the dates vary. Intentional, that's the way that the, the new ordinance staggers the appointments. So I just wanted to point that out in case people are wondering why it is that way.
That is correct, that is in accord, that is in accordance with state statute.
There you go, so Rob's appointment, even though it will expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-one, which is this year, we'll have to reappoint him in twelve thirty-one twenty-one.
Depending on how I do.
Wonderful, how's that?
Is my reappointment, Emery, if I'm already on it, or?
Yeah, um.
Wasn't there something about last time you weren't going to do it, because you wanted to do them all in one, felt swoop, I thought last meeting, something like that?
Well, because we only had Stefan on there, and we wanted to put all the WPCA members on together.
That's.
Whole new board now.
Okay.
Um, Stefan Behuniac.
I'd just like to voice my opinion that I like it when we do it one by one. Because if you have an issue, when you want to voice concern with one of the nominees, you're able to do that in discussion. You're not really able to do that when you just do it in one fell swoop, I always had a disagreement with Kurt when we started doing that, I prefer to just take the time. To do it one by one. That's just me.
Stefan Behuniac, WPCA appointment, three years, expires twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Motion by Finley, second by Rob Van Egan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Bob Finley, WPCA appointment. Three years. It's a reappointment actually expires twelve thirty-one twenty-one.
Don't move.
Motion by Al, second by Trish, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Staying. Motion carries one exemption, because I'm not counting, so it's one, two, three, four, five. Agree, one abstain, how's that? Nick Tadossio, WPCA appointment, three years, twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three, all in favor?
No.
By Bob, second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Jim Cotella, WPCA, reappointment, three years, twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three. Motion by Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, chair votes aye, motion carries six zero, what is this, Kurt Miller, events committee? Appointment, two years, expires February sixteen twenty-two-three.
So move.
Motion by Al Bruno, second by Bob Finley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero.
Grudgingly aye.
What was that?
Grudgingly aye.
Grudgingly aye, yeah.
He's going to organize the first host selectman parade.
This is actually, no, I remember Kurt's, this, the events committee is actually, uh, this is Alex's parade committee, correct, Trish?
Exactly. Everything, right, yeah.
Yeah, don't worry, Dank is in charge, we don't have to worry now about Miller as much, as long as Dank is in charge, we're good.
Good.
Tim Connors, event committee appointment, two years, February sixteen twenty-two-three, motion by Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero, okay. Tax refunds and abatements in your package, you have the tax refunds and abatements, please look it over to make sure there's no conflicts. Seeing there are no conflicts, can I have a motion to move this forward? Motion by Al Bruno, second by Trish Dank, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Transfers, in your package, you can see we have a lot of transfers. First transfer is control number two. It's from the contributions health. Um, in the amount of a hundred, sorry, thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. It's coming out of the contingency form, and it's going to. Um, Alliance for Prevention Awareness, four thousand three hundred. Parent-Child Resource Center, two thousand dollars, Regional Mental Health, eight hundred and fifty dollars, the Rape Crisis Center, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And the Domestic Violence Services, Birmingham Group, four thousand dollars, these are all our normal. Donations we make every single year, but because of us having a free, spending freeze, we put them in the contingency. So can I have a motion to move these forward?
Motion.
Motion by Rob Van Egan, second by Trish Dank, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Trying to find the next one. Okay, control number three. Um, once again, contributions health, the amount requested is thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. It's coming out of the contingency, and it's going into Babe Ruth League, the Seymour Soccer Association, oh, sorry, Babe Ruth League for three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Seymour Soccer Association, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, Pop Warner, uh, League, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. George Day Hummel Little League, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, the Boys and Girls Club, ten thousand dollars. Kuzutonic Boy Scouts Association, thirty-five hundred dollars, and Team, ten thousand dollars, Ken Hive a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Rob Van Egan, second by Al Bruno, discussion?
Yeah, quick question, I see the thirty-five hundred dollars for the Boy Scouts of America, and they also requested five. Um, do we do something similar for the Girl Scouts?
I did not, I, you know, go through the budget, I noticed the Boy Scouts, I do not see Girl Scouts in there. I do not see anything for the GSAs in there.
Okay, are we voting on all of these as all-encompassing?
I have to, yes.
Chris, do you know somebody affiliated with the Girl Scouts that might want to have their. Nonprofit listed on here next year?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you, you got to let them know, I had to do the same thing for Seymour Soccer back in the day, this probably years ago, we never. Received any of these monies, and I had to kind of put it forth, and Decru so helped me, and other people helped me get it on the, the list.
So we can get the Girl Scout troops that are affiliated with this town? Some of that.
I don't see why not. Right, Emery?
Yeah. Every, both boy and girls, you know, now they're the scouts, um, both groups are hurting for membership, you know, obviously, I have a dog in the fight, my wife works for Girl Scouts. So, um, that is something that I'm very passionate about, so I just wanted to make sure that there was equities.
Yep, Chris, just call the office tomorrow.
Very well. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, both, chair votes aye, motion carries six zero, sorry. Okay. Three, four. Okay, Department, Department of Public Works, they're taking it from the contingency plan, it's forty thousand dollars, it is going to the snow plowing overtime and snow plowing materials. Snow plowing overtime is twenty thousand dollars, and snow plowing materials is twenty thousand dollars, for a total of forty thousand dollars. Um, have a motion to put this forward so we can discuss. A motion by Trish, second by Bob Finley, under discussion, as you know, we've been getting hit by storm at least two, some, three times a week, especially the ice storm. And we're about to get hit again on Thursday into Friday, we were having a salt delivery. Last week, it overturned on Route Eight, so now we are waiting for another delivery, hoping to God that it comes in tomorrow before the next storm hits us. Um, so, the department, the guys are really getting whacked with the crazy time the storms are coming in, as well as how much materials we're using. Um, but Tony and his crew, they are very efficient in what they're doing, in treating the ground prior to. So I just wanted to discuss that a little bit, is there any other discussions, Rob Van Egan?
I just want to start by saying they've done an amazing job, I mean, I hear them up and down constantly, so I, any question I have has nothing to do with their competence, they've been doing an amazing job. Even on the message boards, I'll see responses if somebody asks if a certain road's been done, I mean, they're very responsive. Just regarding the paperwork itself, I just wanted to see, maybe I read it wrong and misunderstood, it looked like, is it that they're asking for an additional forty? To cover what they feel they're going to go through the rest of this season, uh, in the summer, or they're not saying that they're over that, it looked, if I read the numbers right, it looked like they were. Under by forty thousand five hundred five dollars and fifty cents.
Yes.
Okay, so they're under that, they're just assuming with salt and the prices of salt that have jacked up because of what's been happening between New London. They're, they just want to get that forty in advance to make sure they're prepped for the hours in this hall, right?
Right, because we knew, we don't know these storms, I mean, we're supposed to get this, thank God today's was a rain event and not an ice event, if it was an ice event, we would have been in trouble.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I read that, understood that properly.
Did we hear if they're going to be able to deliver before Thursday?
Not yet.
Not yet, I'll know tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
But I hope I don't, we don't receive another phone call about a resident being upset because someone's plowing their road at four. But I hope I don't, we don't receive another phone call about a resident being upset because someone's plowing their road at four o'clock in the morning.
I hear that, I listen.
Too bad.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it too, because I got to get to work.
Everybody's in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Most carries six zero. Um. Okay, that's it for those. Thank you. Correspondence, we have the check listings. Rory, did any public comment come in?
Uh, no.
Did anybody from the public join?
Uh, we had one member who seems to have left.
Did they have a question?
Not to say, let me know.
Selectmen's public comments, we will go with Trish Dank first, because she's on my screen first.
Um, Alex just wanted me to mention to everybody, the Land Trust is having a blood drive. It, I don't, I think it's going to be canceled this Friday with the weather, but. They have been running about, uh, they're running most of the blood drives in the area and that have been very successful, so just keep your. Eyes out if anyone's ever able to sign up or your ears out. For one, if you're able to.
I'll put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah, um, Public Works has been doing a good job and I still sit here, I'm very appreciative of the employees that get into work every day. Uh, even during weather. Thank you, Tracy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trish. Bob Finley.
Lift with your legs, be safe this weekend. Hopefully we won't get a lot of snow.
They are saying a lot of snow. I think Tony's going to come and break my snowman in my office. Chris Bowen?
First off, um, everybody be safe with the snow coming and. Either shovel your, um, you know, Pat's not here, so somebody's got to pick up the slack. Shovel your hydrants. Or if somebody needs help shoveling theirs, definitely offer that if possible. We need to ensure that our firefighters are well equipped to get to the hydrants. Um, election season is coming up. I had a, a conversation with a young person. Few days ago who wanted to be more involved in the political process, but wasn't sure he was qualified to do that. And I'm putting this message out for everyone, regardless of your political affiliation. If you want to help the town of Seymour, you are qualified. Absolutely, and we want people to get involved and get more. Involved in the community and be the change that you want to be. If you think something needs to be improved upon or if you want to have a say. An active and engaged. Public is necessary for an effective community, so if you're having doubts, uh, reach out to whoever you need to reach out to. Um, and if you reach out, I can say personally, if you reach out to me and you're with the other party, I'll send you to the other party. At the end of the day, it's about making Seymour better and. Making this community a better place to live in and for people to want to move to. So definitely, we want people to be involved.
Thank you, Chris Bowen. Absolutely right. Al Bruno?
I just want to say, fingers crossed, uh, that the high school athletics can get back full time soon. Um, I'm just glass half full, I guess, so we can. Watch the kids compete. I'd love to see my daughter compete again, uh, so hopefully you can get them out of the house and. Get them exercising. I know that they've started practices. I know some teams are competing and having games. I just really wanted to get back to normal with the, with the high school athletics, to be honest, and I miss my college hockey this winter very badly. I know Finley does too, so, um. The other thing I wanted to say is, we, we've gotten a little better in the town with our littering, litter problem, but I have noticed before the snow. There are a lot of little nipper bottles all over my neighborhood. So people will have those little alcohol bottles and they're just throwing them out the, the window. And I don't know, I guess I could put this to Emery and Rich, is there something the town can do? Uh, about that with, with, uh, fine, I know littering signage, you don't want to litter the town with more signage. Um, put signs up not to litter and all that. I, I don't know if there's anything we can propose at the state level, maybe. Higher redemptions for those little nipper bottles. I know the, the city of Newport is doing that because they, they've been having an issue. With those little nipper bottles all over Newport and they're giving like, they want to propose a fifty cent, uh. Uh, reimbursement for it. Um, so I'm just throwing it out there. I just wanted to talk about it, maybe something to think about. Maybe you guys don't think it's a good idea, but I just want to put it out there because it's driving me nuts seeing these things when I jog all over town. And, and it's just, it's disgusting, so. Your stunned silence is very reassuring.
Any littering, I agree, Al, is bad. Any littering. I was writing my notes.
That's a line from Monsters Inc. That's what Roz says to Mike Wazowski. Silence is very reassuring.
I have my notes. Rob Van Egan. Where's Alex?
Uh, he's downstairs screaming. Uh, his mother is being a saint right now, trying to keep him calm.
Rob's hiding.
Yes. Don't let her know. As, as I start going back through some of the nips that Al was just talking. Um, it was actually, um, I didn't have anything prepared, but I thought about it, uh, when I saw the transfers for what the, uh. City is going to be donating, uh, to some of the nonprofits, PCRC team. Um, so I actually just got an email about, uh, putting together the Chance to Shine Race, uh, again this year for PCRC. We're going to have a meeting later this week. So it makes me think for everyone who's been lucky enough to not lose a job or have reduced hours. Uh, maybe over the last year because you didn't go out as much, you have a little more disposable income. I just kind of want to put it out there. The season of people asking for money, um, after the holiday one, uh, now going into this, uh, normally exchange club, we would have had our mini golf tournament coming up. Um, you know, so many golf tournaments normally would have happened. Uh, there's going to be so many wonderful nonprofits like PCRC, like TEAM. Um, that are not going to be able to have their events and for a lot of people without having. I'm going to say that carrot, they don't want to give the money out. They, they don't, it's not even on their radar to do so, uh, unless they get to go do something fun. Uh, everyone's trying to adjust. They had a lot of practice last year. They're going to be doing so this year. Uh, please just be aware. Uh, of the wonderful work that they do with the reduced resources and financing that they've had to go through, and if you're in a position. To help out some of these nonprofits, please, please, please absolutely do so. Thank you.
So, Rob, do you have a slide?
Yeah, is that a virtual race? Is that what you're talking about, Rob?
Uh, we actually convert, last year we converted it because of Covid, we had a virtual race. We're having a meeting this Thursday to discuss what we're going to do because it takes place May-June.
Got it, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, so it just, that just got me priming. Everybody's going to be dealing with that. Whatever your favorite charity is, don't forget about them just because they may not have an event or they may have a virtual one instead of, uh, a fun one that you can go get, you know, food and drink at. As soon as we do have any information, uh, lockdown, I will absolutely, uh, bring that up in my select. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Right, um, I know I did my selectmen's report, but I do. Al, to answer your question, the bill season for the state is, has ended. We'll have to put that bill in and speak to our state rep if we wanted to put that. For a bill, but I don't really think that residents or any state residents should have to pay more money on bottled returns. Just opinion, I really think that we need to put signs up for people in littering. And it, it's just all around, all around town, just people are just not picking up. We saw it at the community center. So I think more, more, more signs, um, we'll, we'll do, but we'll see, we can do that. And just let you know that Mission Twenty Two. Um, they have canceled their gala for this year because they just are not going to be able to fit anybody. We just received that March nineteenth. Um, I'm trying to open up Mark, the governor is saying now, March nineteenth. Um, he's going to allow. Um, indoors for private social and recreational events at commercial venues commencing March. Mar- Friday, March nineteenth and further, indoors will be fifty percent capacity capped at one hundred, outdoors up to two hundred. Um, this is also dependent on the Covid numbers as we keep trending down, so. Hopefully, um, Rich, did you have anything?
No, uh, just be safe, be well, and. Let's keep getting through this. Thank you.
Rory?
Uh, yeah, well, I just want to let everybody know, uh, Malia in our. Uh, got a job with Mayor Aaron Stewart in the city of New Britain. So her last day will be, uh, this Friday and we wish her luck and we will miss her and you guys are going to have to deal with me for the time being.
Good luck to Malia.
Yeah, but that sucks for us.
We're really happy for her, but it really sucks for us.
Yes.
It sucks for Rory, but it sucks for all of us. Monica, do you have anything? Oh, Bruno, you have something else?
Yeah, I just got the text from my daughter and I want to make sure I say it. It kind of piggybacks on what Rob said, just if you could just give me thirty seconds, um. My mother is a lymphoma survivor. She was diagnosed back in two thousand and five. It was well advanced. She also has an autoimmune disorder, so it kind of complicated things. She's very fortunate to be alive, but for my sister-in-law Jill, who was working at the National Institute of Health at the time. She got her hooked up with somebody in Washington DC who had cured at the time twenty-three out of twenty-three people with late-stage lymphoma and. Autoimmune deficiency disorder. So it's, it's a cause that's near and dear to our heart. My daughter is supporting. Uh, the COSCUS, Continue Katie's Quest for your, for a cure. They're going to, it supports Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. They're going to have a virtual five K walk run. Uh, it's a thirty dollar per participant fee. You get a T-shirt. And then there's a link to sign up and she asked me to put this on my Facebook page and I'm. I literally just got it when I was in the meeting. She must be working on it. I know she had a Valley United Way meeting tonight. I know they're hooking up to help with this cause. So I know that Rob likes to run five Ks and, and all that, so I, I'm definitely going to do it. So I just wanted to let you all know, I'll be putting it on my Facebook page. I'll probably be shooting you all. The link, if you so choose to participate, I know I'm going to do it, uh, because that's very close to us as a family and my mother's. In remission and doing fine, but, uh, it was, it was not good. And thank, thank God for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, they also helped us out.
Thanks, Bruno. I'll actually walk it. I won't run it. I'm just not at the age to run.
You could walk. We need more weightlifting competitions and less running competitions.
More wing eating?
Weightlifting.
Oh. I hear, I got Archie Morris on the brain. I want to eat some hot wings.
There you go.
I want some wings right now.
Now, the eating competition, that's Rob's gig.
That's Rob's gig. Um, so I mentioned the M twenty-two gala is canceled and they are emailing people to send them back their money or you can make your donation. I'm hoping that we can do it again next year, get M twenty-two going again. Um. The school opening plan. I, I did receive the plan from Minister Wilson on Friday afternoon, late Friday morning, early Friday afternoon. So they, they have the opening plan and I know they're having a special Board of Ed meeting in regards to that, so if you have any questions, make sure you get it. All right, with that, if there's no more questions, no more comments, I will enter. You have a question, Chris?
No, I was motioning to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Chris, second by Finley, all in favor?
Hi.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Hug that baby for me.